Actually, it really has been a great month. It hasn't gotten cold. I remember when I was a kid.
Yeah, not so much this year.
Very typically.
I haven't.
We didn't have snow this year till Thanksgiving.
Set up one of those.
Thanksgiving or after Thanksgiving.
Sprinklers. Somebody walks in.
I'm a lover.
I agree with you.
We moved into the house we're in. Weekend of Thanksgiving.
We moved several times.
I don't want to mention any of these.
Sprinklers.
She's been real patient.
My assistant is sitting up there waiting.
And it wasn't as bad as we thought.
Portland do.
Can.
But I remember going to East Lansing.
You know, they won't have it anymore. You'd all rise and welcome all of you to tonight's common council meeting. We'll start off with the invocation by Diane. Thanks Diane.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the refreshing rain that fell this weekend. And we thank you for the blessing that that brought to farmers. I know they could always use more, but we thank you for what we did receive. We also just thank you for the fact that besides around us, all the crops are growing, that our city is growing and changing. And please help us to be wise in guiding it in that direction that our citizens have foreseen for our city. Help us keep at that place that is friendly and welcoming while progressive and innovating. Amen.
Thank you Diane. Now the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For the record, Cindy Dobbins is absent along with legal representation tonight. We'll go to the first item, which is the minutes from our last meeting. I believe I'm looking at July 7th. Seeking approval.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose nay. The ayes have it. Thank you for that. Want to welcome everybody that's here tonight. Thank you. Some had to drive a little bit further than others, so good. Reports are all written. The first item and only item is the June fund report. Lynn, any comments?
Well, for the most part, most of the funds should be up because as I mentioned last meeting, we got our distribution in late June, so it shows on this fund report.
Any questions on that? Okay, thank you. Move to unfinished business. There isn't any. That'll take us to new business. And the first item is a conflict of interest statement from George Clements. Seeking a motion to accept that as presented.
I'll make a motion to accept it as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose nay. The ayes have it. Next item is a resolution. This particular resolution has made it through for consideration and vote, the Plan Commission and the Redevelopment Commission. Jeremy Skinner unable to make it this evening because of an important family commitment, a good thing. And so he's asked me to present this. I think I can get help from Diane, who's also seen this, as well as Mike and
Jergen has.
Jergen as well on plan. That's right, Jergen and Jack. I'll read the memo for the public record. This is from Jeremy Skinner. I'm presenting to the common council a resolution to approve resetting the allocation area that includes most of the 100 acres we purchased to create the Warsaw Tech Park in 2012. This resolution will reset the 25-year life of that property and allow us to designate AutoCam Medical as a taxpayer within that allocation area. Warsaw Redevelopment Commission and the Warsaw Plan Commission have approved their resolutions. Now I'm requesting the common council consider and approve the resolution, at which time it will go back to the Redevelopment Commission for final approval. At the same time, we've completed the final plat, creating the 15 acres that will be disposed to AutoCam Medical, where I said it. Executed the development agreement and we are working on closing on the 15 acres. Again, that's from Jeremy Skinner. Tech Park, Jeremy Skinner, working with AutoCam. This is a very good thing. Multi-millions will be invested in this community. They are predicting over 300 jobs. This is a really good thing. And again, working with AutoCam on this resolution.
So Mayor, are we, is the Resolution 2025-07-02?
Yes.
Okay, so the first part is his presentation to the council.
Yes, which I did. And then the resolution, that's what he's seeking approval. This was voted on by the, presented to and voted on by the Plan Commission and the Redevelopment Commission. The protocols for doing this, I was, I think the Redevelopment Commission, Jeremy says like we've seen in the past, there are several steps in several votes that have to be taken. If approved here, it will then go back to the Redevelopment Commission and they will consider and vote on it for a final time.
So just so I get it right, AutoCam sits just outside of what we, what we're calling the Tech Park now. And we're acquiring more land to include them within that Tech Park. And by doing that, it's going to reset the time clock?
Mike is shaking his head. Do you want to help? It's actually their, go ahead, Mike. You went through the
It's actually in the Tech Park.
It is.
Okay.
They're wanting property that is to the west on US 30. They also want more acreage to develop this property.
But it's all in the
It is all right now in the Tech Park.
In the Tech Park. They're going to buy a lot and a half.
So it had to be replatted.
Right. And we want to reset the clock. So once TIP funds become available, we can still use those TIP funds for another 25 years because it's been since 2012. So we're halfway through the time with no
And Mike, if I remember right, we're allowed to do that under state code. We can do that, so.
They also will have an option on more property should they, they'll have right of first refusal. Well, there's another lot and a half.
Okay, so there's some three essentially, and they're doing one and a half of the
Yeah, they're going to take half of the three, which is one and a half. They have first right of refusal on the other one and a half should, should somebody come along and make us offer it.
And those that have already begun the countdown on the TIP, they will expire when they would have originally expired, but the whole district won't expire. So they will go on to our tax rolls when we granted that.
Right. Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you. Okay. So it is on existing property, Josh, already.
Okay.
The way it was worded there, it kind of
It is very confusing. And we don't, you don't have the map. I do not know why the map was not put on there.
I was wondering.
Because it was on every other meeting, but the map is not on this.
There is a legal description.
Yeah, but that's not really helpful. I don't know Jeff, if you can go back to the Plan Commission and pull up.
I don't want to try that right now. It's a good point because then I'd have to get it to come up. The bottom line, it's in the Tech Park. Jeremy felt like the acreage that they're going to get is enough for now, but also that first right if they do grow. It's a good thing for them and obviously a good thing for us. Diane's comments on the reset for this, it's just advantageous.
What's really advantageous for us is that quite a few years ago, you'll remember, Medtronic was leaving. And they came up with this plan with AutoCam to sell AutoCam their building. And they started, they had it all worked out where AutoCam was actually taking possession of part of their, their building over the years. Then Medtronic says, we're not leaving. So when we thought we were losing one and then found somebody else to take it over, now instead we end up with two industries. So it really ended up being a good thing for Warsaw. Lots of jobs being, being added.
So Mr. Mayor, there are two resolutions here, right? There's O1 and there's O2. Is that right Lynn?
I think the
It's just O2.
One, there's resolutions from other commissions. He just included those, I believe.
This is just O2.
That have already been approved.
The one that he's seeking, I just checked that, is the
That's from the Plan Commission.
Is 2025-07-02.
So we're only voting on zero two?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
There's, one thing might be confusing you is there's two documents in that section. The first one was the presentation, which
The explanation.
Yeah, just, or a lot of times that's added together. And this time it was separated out.
And if you add to the second one and you scroll through the whole thing, there's zero one and there's zero two.
Yeah.
That's what confused me.
Ah, okay.
Threw me a little. That's why I just wanted to clarify and make sure, since we don't have legal counsel here, we're left to our own devices.
So if you, if you look after the signature page on the one you, your group is approving tonight, then there says Exhibit 8, and that's the Plan Commission Resolution?
Yes.
Oh, one is planned, yeah.
And we passed that.
Yeah, I got you.
I'd just like to add, the good thing is there are other lots available, so if someone comes in and wants to buy that lot, they do have other options. So we can easily then sell the other acreage to AutoCam. Which gives us a lot of options.
Come one, come all. They're coming fast.
And if AutoCam decides to take advantage of their right of first refusal, they do so with the understanding they have to build, help me Jack, within 18 months, they have to build another 100,000 square foot building and hire another 150 people. So that's going to be a big obligation on their part should somebody else come along and want that other lots, those other lots.
If you want to, Josh, here's what we're talking about if you want to come and see.
I'll take a look really fast. Yeah, you should.
Also, also Mike, I was going through the wherethis in this particular resolution that the council's asked to vote, consider and vote on tonight. You'll see in the third paragraph, he's mentioned the Redevelopment Commission adopted Resolution O1. And then on the 14th, that'd be the fourth paragraph that the Plan Commission adopted and approved its resolution. So that's included in ours. And again, I think the complexities, like Josh said, this is 16 pages thick without the map. There's a lot of steps involved here, but a good thing for AutoCam and then obviously for the city. Lot of credit to Jeremy and the Redevelopment Commission. Also, it was presented to plan as well, but for doing this.
And then if it is approved here by this body tonight, it will come back for a second reading that redevelopment.
So if I'm following it right, the Redevelopment Commission wants to do something, this, they have to present it to the Plan Commission and the council for approval. And then they will find, the Redevelopment Commission at their next meeting will be informed if, if you pass this, that plan and council have supported this resolution and then they can act and finalize it. In fact, it's the whereas, it's paragraph number five. You have to go to, go to the Plan Commission.
That's document O1?
Up, it's O2.
O2, it's the first document.
O2.
The Redevelopment Commission from proceeding till the Plan Commission is approved, has approved, which has happened. Again, it's laying out the steps in here.
So the last step is for the Redevelopment Commission to approve it and then it's all approved.
Yes, and then the resolution you're looking at, it'd be on page two down at the bottom. Be it resolved, the common council tonight, you're doing these three things. So it has three things identified. We're recognizing the Plan Commission order has been approved. There's an allocation area under the Act is hereby approved pursuant to Section 15 of the Act. And then the third one, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage by the council. So those three items connected to all the wherethis is what this resolution is. Again, a lot of work and back Josh, you were looking at the map, 16 pages thick, so it's to make it work again. Sorry Jeremy's not here, but he, again, it was just a very good opportunity for him to be with his family tonight. And as you know, he would have had to, he had a Redevelopment Commission at four. He would have had to, he would have missed it basically. So he had to put up with me tonight. Any other comments or questions? I do appreciate Mike, Jack, Jergen and Diane helping out, all of you've seen it before. If there aren't any, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion, we approve Resolution 2025-07-02.
Motion to approve by Diane, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Jerry. Any further discussion? Hearing that, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose nay? The ayes have it. That will take us to another resolution. I think this is a transfer request. This again is from Jeremy Skinner. Transfer request for residential infrastructure financing loan program. We have enclosed on this residential infrastructure financing bond for Bel Augusta Project, and I need to transfer funds to cover the first bond payment. Therefore, I'm requesting to transfer an additional $40,000 into debt service to cover the first bond payment. The funds will be transferred out of improvements other than building into debt service within the northern residential TIP budget. That again is a memo to the common council from Jeremy Skinner on July 18th. This would be Resolution 2025-07-03, a transfer of $40,000. Any questions or comments on this one?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mike. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Jack. Any further discussion? Hearing that, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose nay? The ayes have it. Thank you. That'll take us to the final item in new business. This is ordinance number 2025-07-03. This is amending Chapter 74 of the City Code of Warsaw, Traffic and Vehicles, Article 5, specifically parking, stopping and standing. 74223 bus stops. Would somebody like to share what we're looking at here? Thanks Kristen.
Good afternoon, evening.
There you go, good.
Caps is pleased to return this evening following our July 7th presentation where we introduced our new deviated fixed route service for Warsaw. We're joined by Maycock again. Tonight we present ordinance number 2025-07-03, the next step toward implementation this fall. As you stated, the ordinance established rules for bus stop within the city. These changes are necessary for launching the fixed route service and ensuring safe, organized operation. So key updates in that ordinance, designation and installation of signage. Public bus stops will be clearly marked with signage approved and installed by the City of Warsaw in accordance with all applicable regulations. Bus operation standards, bus drivers will be required to stop within 18 inches of the curb, ensuring alignment with the curb to minimize obstruction of traffic flow. Passenger engagement, buses will only stop at designated areas when there is a visible passenger waiting or a request from an onboard rider with proper signaling to nearby motorists and pedestrians for safety. And then motor, motorists guidelines, private vehicles may cautiously pass stop buses, that excludes school buses, and may only use designated bus stop briefly for active passenger drop off or pickup. These updates follow a public hearing held on July 15th, 2025. And we respectfully request the council's favorable consideration of this ordinance so we can move forward with full implementation this fall. We're happy to answer any questions.
Will we have like curbs painted or anything so that people know, you know, how far away they need to be from that bus stop in terms of parking and things like that?
At this point in time, I don't believe there's plans for the curbs to be painted outside of, we did propose our stop at the library, possibly to have that stop striped. Outside of that, there, I, no, there will not be curbs painted at this time.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't remember the discussion there either, but Justin, is this all new language too? I mean, if we ever had bus stops language, I don't know, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but is it
Yeah. As far as I'm aware, there hasn't been any bus stop ordinances in our municipal code previously. So we definitely would want to have Scott review of this ordinance. We can move forward with an approval contingent on that review tonight. But the, Caps has been diligent in working with city staff on, a couple, a couple of council members are on the traffic commission. They presented this a couple of times to us as well. We've reviewed it and tried to get the best product. We know that there's going to be changes as they implement the route. There, we know that there may be changes on stop locations to make sure they best serve the community, but we feel like something like this is very beneficial to our community, especially at the cost they're proposing for the people who have not used the system. So it seems like a really good system.
But this particular ordinance is not designating the certain spots so we can use it if we change it. It's just saying what a bus stop will look like and what's allowed within that area where the bus stop is designated to be, correct?
Very good point. Very good point.
So I don't remember, so I'm going to ask the question. Are these bus stops in the public road? Are they in the road? I see you nodding. Okay, they're all in the, in the lane of traffic?
Not all of them. The majority are in, on the side of a road. There are some that are in private business property. The majority are in the road though.
Okay. Is there, just a question, has there been given any thought as to like a pull off? You pull into, I don't know what you would call it, where you would pull in, load, unload, and then turn on the turn signal, get back out in the, in the traffic so you're not blocking the, the lane of traffic or the flow of traffic?
That's a great question. We did get consideration to try to place stops as strategically as possible to limit the blockages of traffic. However, there are some stops that we know will, will block traffic. Traffic will have to merge over to pass a vehicle. It's part of the way these routes are designed where to save time to keep that loop on that hour loop, we're not pulling off of the route every single stop. So to do that would be
Well, I'm not saying pull off the route. You just pull in, load, unload, and you pull back out into the flow of traffic.
There are some, again Mike, where that will happen, but there are others. I think there's 16 total, 16 stops total. The previous meeting, they had all of them identified with photos. And so you could go back into the, and take a look at it, but not all of them are. There are, out of the 16, there are several that are on the road.
I, just to add to this, I think I have a sense of what you're sensing, which is basically building, doing some infrastructure so you kind of build a turnoff for the bus.
Just to pull in, you just pull off and
Right.
Sort of like what I recommended over by Lincoln Elementary. Remember when I told you
Correct.
Exactly.
Yeah, but that's already, so basically, that is a best practice for building bus stops because we're just proposing to launch a pilot. The infrastructure cost of building that for every stop, we don't even know, when we're just planning to do this for a couple of years, it's just not worth basically the cost of doing that at this point in time.
But I will tell you Mike, like Kristen said, there was a lot of consideration on where.
Okay.
And it's not always perfect, but they did a lot of work to figure out where are the best places to stop.
So will the stop at the library be on Detroit Street or will it, what street will it be on?
The stop at the library is on Main. I believe that's the street that runs there in front of it.
Okay, good. All right.
I'm just curious, what are the traffic laws about a city bus stopping and traffic being behind it? Like are people allowed to then pull in the other lane and go around it? Or so it's not like a school bus that extends its arm and traffic both ways has to stop?
Correct, yeah.
So I'm assuming they have flashing lights though or something?
Yes, it will be in our policies. Drivers will be expected as they're, as they're approaching a stop, if they're stopping, they're going to be engaging their hazard lights to signal that they're stopping. They will stop for the minimum time they have to to board people safely or, you know, let people exit the bus and then move on. If there's no, nobody waiting and nobody needs to get off at that stop, they'll just pass on by it. They won't even stop.
That makes sense.
Letter E indicates that, that, yeah, that you can go around it. Not treating it like a school bus. Which is obviously concern, and you may remember the discussions, I think upstairs and, and even here at the traffic commission, but a good faith effort to find spots in locations that are as safe as possible to get this started.
I thought of you guys this past weekend. I saw on CBS Sunday Morning, did anyone see the autonomous bus? Did you see the story?
No.
And it just made like a mile loop, just went around and there's no driver. And it just stops, you get on, you get off.
Maybe one day we'll get there.
Maybe.
But if you're getting off on the right-hand side of the bus, you live over on the other side of the street, you have to do that on your own, right?
Correct, in most cases. Being that it's a deviated fixed route, if someone was unable to due to, you know, mobility concerns, they could call and preschedule a deviation and then we would take off from that route, deviate to their home address or business address if it's an appointment or something and drop them off at the door.
You know, although it's probably not necessary, I appreciate the verbiage you put in on, on point E, saying, stating that this provision, well, surrounding motorists may pass by a stop bus, but this provision does not apply, does not apply to school buses. That's, I think that's, that's good, putting that distinction in there. That just helps keep it clear. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I believe this will need two readings because it is an ordinance and so
And it's not been reviewed by legal yet.
No, and so the, very good point there. That would give the legal department to, if, if it's passed on first reading tonight, an opportunity to look at it and
Just make sure.
Give legal advice to council the next meeting that this is considered.
Well, I think this is a really neat opportunity for the city. You know, obviously you go to larger cities, all of them have some sort of public transportation. And I think that's a really cool sign that Warsaw is growing enough to entertain public transportation in this way. I thought a lot, a lot about that presentation a few weeks ago, that, how fun that is to kind of be a part of the, the growth of the city to the point where how fun that is to kind of be a part of the, the growth of the city to the point where, you know, public transportation, you know, potentially is going to become realized. So I think this is great, and, and I have a lot of confidence it's probably going to work out well. So with that, I will make a motion to approve ordinance 2025, oh seven oh three on first reading.
Motion by Josh to pass this ordinance on first reading. Is there a second? I'll second it. There's a second by Jurg. And any further discussion? Any further comments?
Thank you.
Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you very much for your continued efforts.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other matters? I will tell you today, I, I still can't believe it, the management team for the Dear Task Force, we met, and this is year number 20 that this has been going on, and planning the training day and, and getting ready for an ordinance that will be presented to you. I can't believe it. So, any other items you'd like to share?
I'd give a shout out to the Parks Department, took my family to the movie night a couple of weeks back, I don't remember when it was, but Little Rascals was playing there, the Pike Lake Park, and, yeah, that was so fun. So kids watched Little Rascals, and, and we got some hot dogs and popcorn, and nice turnout, and really, really neat how they had it all set up. So just give a shout out to the Parks Department there.
Very good.
And I'm thankful that these speakers are working.
They are working better, and I appreciate you guys keeping them close. We, yeah, had a, had a month or two there, just, we finally caught it, and there's been work there, and yeah, you're right, Diane, you can tell it's working better. Appreciate everybody's patience with that.
It only took, well, four, five years.
Yeah, more, it was more than a couple months.
Yeah, it took a while.
Did you notice it, Jerry?
Yeah.
I didn't notice it.
Lynn and her, her staff's been hard at work with the budgets. We're working on that, more to come in August with department heads presenting, and I just appreciate your patience with my office because there's been a lot of changes and things that we've been working through, so a lot of-
Hopefully, we'll have the budget books out maybe later this week, by Friday.
Yeah, so she's, like, the wink there, she's being really patient with my office, so I appreciate your patience also, and we should have those to you here soon.
So our next meeting starts now early then, correct?
Six o'clock.
They are six o'clock.
On August 4th.
Yeah, the next two will be six, the August meetings will be at, at six o'clock start, good?
You know, on Monday, I went down to, a week ago today, went down, talked to Dustin, and talking budgets, and afterwards, I asked him just to give me just a little walk around. Did he tell you?
No, I, no, but-
The houses were coming down.
They are down.
They come down fast. But when he was showing me, standing out there on that asphalt, looking around, he was showing me where the footprint of this building is going to be, I did not realize that thing is going to be big and massive.
The footprint is three and a half times bigger. It could be a 30 to 50-year impact on the community.
And that's where I was headed. What a great future, a move for the future. I mean, that building is going to give us many years of, of use, and the city's going to grow, and they're going to grow into it and probably outgrow it, but it's, it's really going to be impressive.
Yeah.
Impressive. And I'm, I'm just thankful that, that we, number one, chose to do it. You know, we were all involved, but I think more importantly, given what's going on, we chose to do it when we did.
I appreciate everybody's efforts, and I know we've got the SB one looming in the next two, three years as that comes at us, but back to Dustin and the other department heads, they've been very conservative, you'll see, when you take a look at what they're proposing, and I know many of you have already talked to several of them, and I appreciate their efforts, and then it's always nice to have Lynn keeping her eyes on it and helping give insight and advice to, to my office and as well as to them, whether we like it or not.
One department even lowered their budget, and the negative, no, no increase.
Right.
So that person doesn't have to do any line one cuts.
Yeah, who would that be?
I don't know, Lynn. Yeah, I know it, so. Anything else? Anything else? Alright, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, we are adjourned.
Thirty-five minutes.
Yeah, that, not bad.
Way to go.
Excellent.
That was quicker than our redevelopment.
That, that meeting was fast. It was the after-
Yeah, I came down, hey, you got, I came down, you guys were talking.